All right. Well, thank you all so much for coming out tonight. This is the Planning Board's information session for zoning for multifamily housing. With me tonight is Michael Slagel, our land use planner. I'm Valerie Ortiz, the Planning Director in Stowe, and we also have members of our Planning Board here. So tonight, we'll just be providing an overview of what MBTA Communities is and why we need to comply, what goals this meets for the state as well as the town. We'll talk a little bit about the Planning Board's proposal for compliance, including the location of the proposed zoning district. We'll also review our next steps and just to get us to special town meeting, which is scheduled for Monday, October 27. And then lastly, we'll spend a few minutes on your questions. So the purpose of tonight's session is to share out information about this initiative and how we propose we'll get to compliance so that you have the information that you need to make your decision ahead of the town meeting vote. So I'll pass this to Michael to start talking about the state law.
Great, thank you Valerie. If you could advance to the next slide. I'm going to be giving a brief overview about what the MBTA Communities Act means generally and then what it means for Stowe itself. And then following that Valerie will talk about the zoning proposal that the Planning Board has come up with. So starting very big picture, an executive summary, if you will. The MBTA Communities Act is a requirement for certain towns and cities to adopt zoning that allows for the production of multifamily housing by right. And for those of you who are not too familiar with zoning, zoning is our primary tool that we use here in Massachusetts that regulates land use. So parts of the town are broken up into different districts. And within those districts, we have bylaws or the local ordinances, as some other places call it, that say what you can do in that area. So this is a state level act. And for some of the big reasons why the state has been pushing for this law is that Massachusetts is in a housing shortage. I'm sure many people have heard of people struggling to find homes. We know that housing has been linked to a healthy regional economy. And we're seeing that the high prices of homes across the Commonwealth are causing people to leave this region. They're heading elsewhere to other states where the housing is a little bit less expensive. So on the next slide, I mentioned that there are some communities that are subject to this law. And this map here on the left shows the 177 towns and cities that are subject to this law. Each of the towns are broken down into different categories of MBTA communities. And these categories are based on the proximity of the town or city to services offered by the T, whether that be the subway, the commuter rail, the ferries, or bus services. So all of these were taken into consideration. Also, the population of the town and city and the number of housing units. So on this map, you can see Stowe is highlighted in that red outline. We are considered to be an adjacent small town because we do not have any MBTA service, but we are next to a town that does. And we are a relatively small community compared to the rest of the towns and cities shown here throughout the Commonwealth. So Stowe is not, is, well, as we're, we're in the process now of going through our zoning process, but many other towns and cities have done so already. In this map, it shows the 140 towns and cities that have adopted compliant zoning. They're shown in the different shades of blue. And of these 140 communities that have adopted zoning that would comply with the requirements of the MBTA Communities Act, 105 have been fully compliant with the law. The other ones are in either conditional review, meaning they might even make a change, or they have not gotten their final approval by the Excitiv Office of Housing in Livable Communities. So we've seen that there has been a lot of support for this. But what do these communities need to do? So on the next slide, here is just the basic requirements for all MBTA communities. So the big part is they will have to adopt zoning that allows for the production of multifamily housing by right or as of right. And what this means is that there is no special permit, which many people in Stowe are familiar with. For those of you who aren't, that is a discretionary permit where the Planning Board or the Zoning Board of Appeals reviews an application for a certain development and gives it the thumbs up or the thumbs down. But we do have the authority to have site plan approval, which is a public process where the Planning Board would hold a hearing. Within this district, we are not able to have age restrictions. And the state law says that this, the towns need to allow housing that is suitable for families. So that means we can't say only seniors and we can't limit the number of bedrooms or the size of bedrooms within a multifamily unit. The state law specifies that this district must have a housing density of 15 units per acre. And that doesn't mean there's 15 buildings. That means across the site, there's going to be a few buildings and each building will contain more than one unit. And then the law loosely says that you must create, amend a zoning district of reasonable size. And that is actually dependent on the different factors of the MBTA Communities classification that I showed in the earlier slides. But all districts, regardless of the town, have to be a size of at least five acres of contiguous land. This is a zoning requirement, and this is not a building requirement of any town. So the towns will only need to have the zoning in place to allow for multifamily housing. There's no requirement for the production or construction of any housing units under this law. And then there are some other permits that people need to get before they do any construction. And a lot of those will not be changing. So the Wetlands Protection Act, which is a state level one, our local wetlands bylaws, those are still in full effect. The well and septic regulations for a, for property are still as is. Those are not changing and our building and fire codes will remain the same. So those ones will not be changing. The only thing that will be changing is the allowance for multifamily housing. All right, so what does this mean for Stowe? As I said, we have to do the as of right housing for multifamily units. No age restrictions, no, it has to be suitable for families. But for Stowe, we just have to create a district that allows this multifamily housing by right. There's no special caveats that we have like other towns and cities do that are larger in size. Just want to say again that zoning does not require housing to be built. Compliance with the state to make sure that we're following the law is determined by just having it in place and following the regulations of the state. So any properties within that district, they can remain as is. They're simply being given additional ways that they can develop their site if they choose to do so. Zoning, I always like to think of it as a menu. You can order a few things on the menu. You can order one thing on the menu and you, or you don't have to order anything at all. So this is kind of like we're giving the property owners a menu of what they can do with their plate, with their property. And I mentioned earlier that there is a density of 15 units per acre that needs to be allowed within the zoning. But any construction of multifamily housing does not need to be at that density. So a property owner could choose to do it at a lower density if they choose to develop at all. There are lots of other requirements that do limit the production of housing of any type, like well-inseptic requirements. So those would actually have some effect on what actually does get built, if anything does get built. Earlier, I talked about kind of the why are we doing this? And we're going to start off by kind of talking about the state's goals. So the state is aware that we do have a housing shortage. This is affecting all communities across the Commonwealth. I mentioned earlier that having growth with housing can help with a healthy and sustainable regional economy that can help retain workers, that can produce more jobs and things like that. When we diversify our housing types, we're able to offer different accommodations for different needs and different price points, ensuring that everyone has a safe place to live. And we're also seeing across the region that our housing stock isn't meeting some of those needs of our residents. So college graduates, young families and older adults are looking to other states across the country to relocate where they have housing that will meet their needs. So this state is really trying to keep the people in Massachusetts who want to be here housed and happy. So now that we know the housing goals of the state, the town itself actually has several housing goals that have gone through many different public processes. So on this slide, we have different examples of how some of the other plans and policies have been produced through community engagement and some of the key findings related to housing. So we can see in the master plan, in 2010, there was a call to increase the types of housing available and integrate affordable units into different parts of town. The comprehensive permit policy says we should have more housing, but put it close to existing village centers. The housing production plan, which was recently completed, encouraged a diversity of housing and provide opportunities to downsize. And our comprehensive plan talks about putting housing near our village centers. So all of these processes came before this zoning initiative or during the zoning initiative that we're talking about. And they've been reviewed by different boards and committees, have had tons of community engagement so far. So we're trying to build off of what we have there. So some of you might be wondering, why is this a requirement for us? And the answer is yes. So in the town of Milton, they had, they were one of the first communities to not comply with the law. And they were brought to court by the Attorney General. And the Supreme Court of Massachusetts determined that the MBTA Communities Act is constitutional and is enforceable. So if we don't comply, there are some risks of civil enforcement and some programs that Stowe would not be eligible for. We have seen recently that the Attorney General has put out an advisory to the towns that are not compliant, saying that there is an intention for legal action to be taken against them. One of the consequences too of not complying with the MBTA Communities Act is that the state will not be giving certain grants to Stowe anymore. And on this slide, we highlighted some of the bigger projects that would specifically not be possible if we wanted to do something similar in the future for non-compliance with the MBTA Communities Act. So that was purchasing a conservation restriction on Carver Hill, the whole Stowe Acres planning process and acquisition. We're working on the signalization of the intersection of Hudson Road and Great Road. And the comprehensive plan consulting fees were paid by a grant. So you can see they range in different values, but all of these help make Stowe a better place. So that is one of the goals of the town is to try to achieve compliance with this law. And the Planning Board throughout this process has also come up with some other ways and other goals specifically as we go through the zoning initiative. So this is to meet the minimum requirements of the MBTA Communities Act. And we want to locate housing close to amenities and services, support local businesses, direct traffic to highest capacity roads, retain Stowe's open space and rural landscape, and allow for incremental development over time. So we were given the framework of the MBTA Communities Act, and we're going to see if we can take part, take that overall and integrate our own principles to make a solution that can achieve compliance and that can work for Stowe. I will note that, you know, this is not going to be the one solution that solves housing for our town or the region, but this is one initiative that can help be part of it. And we're seeing that the Planning Board is going to continue to look at ways to help achieve our housing goals that do not specifically align with the MBTA Communities Act, but might go through a different process. From those goals, the Planning Board really wants to maximize the benefits that multifamily housing can bring to Stowe. So this is some of the potentials that could be brought forward if housing gets built. So we'll talk on the next two slides about housing needs and supporting the local economy. And I talked a little bit earlier about why our, about the state funding that could be at risk in the future if we do not comply with the law. Valerie, if you could go to the next slide. So Stowe has some housing needs that we would like to address. We're seeing that Stowe is 81% single-family housing, and that might not be suitable for every type of household. We're also seeing that it's really expensive to buy and to live in Stowe. So about 27% of households are paying more than 30% of their income on housing. And that is considered to be cost burdened. And this can put additional stresses on to families that are trying to get by. We're also seeing that in order to buy the median home sales price in Stowe, a household would actually have to make $216,000 annually, even though the actual median income in Stowe is much less than that, less than $150,000. So we're seeing that there is this big gap in multifamily housing is one generally less expensive option for housing. And then we're also seeing this huge surge in housing prices across the region and in Stowe. Within an 11-year period, we've seen an increase of 78% of house, house sale prices. So overall, we're seeing that there are limited choices in Stowe and really high costs of living here. So the MBTA Communities Act can be part of our solution towards relieving some of those burdens. When we do add multifamily housing, it can have some positive effects on our local economy. So for Stowe itself, for the residents who live here, when we have more people, we're able to generate more tax revenue that can help pay for our existing services that the town offers. And when there are housing options available to residents that are within their price range, they're able to spend their money a little bit differently and don't have to make some difficult choices on how they spend. So it can give some families a little bit of stress relief. Businesses tend to locate near where places are growing. They want to have a larger customer base. And by adding more housing in a concentrated area, we're bringing more people to a specific area that can help support some of the existing businesses and draw new ones in. So when we add in new residents, they can bring in new revenue. And some of the new residents may even opt to start their own business in town and benefit from the population that has moved in. So that is an overview of the MBTA Communities Act and what it means for Stowe. I'm going to pass it back to Valerie and she'll talk about the Planning Board's proposal for town meeting.
Great, thank you, Michael. So we've been actively discussing these requirements since 2021. In 2023, we began the process of revising the town's housing production plan, which gave us the opportunity to look at current housing needs and get feedback directly from residents on what types of housing are needed and where it's needed. So this really laid the groundwork for this planning process in addition to what we've heard from residents through other townwide outreach, such as through the open space plan or the ongoing comprehensive plan process. So we've held events over the last year, gaining feedback from residents along the way. And we're now ready to take the zoning bylaw and location to a special fall town meeting, which is scheduled for October 27th, so that Stowe is in compliance by our deadline of December 31st of this year. So we have to choose a location for the zoning district. And we've done a lengthy search, really looking to do this in the most beneficial way possible. So we started with a map of the full town of Stowe. So on the map that you see here to the left, the areas in green are the land that we are unable to consider. And that is information coming from the state. So our task was to find either one area of at least 10 acres or two areas of at least five acres. So again, over the last year, we've sought feedback from residents and members of boards and committees. We've reviewed other town plans to look at what areas of town are preferred to conserve and what areas are preferred for housing development. We've incorporated the state-defined excluded land and sensitive land. And the Planning Board has created location considerations based on residents' feedback and those existing plans. And lastly, we sought to find a balance between the state's requirements and maximizing benefits to Stowe residents. So the areas circled here in red are the areas that we've looked into further. So these areas come from your suggestions, from reviewing town priorities and from mapping analyses. So you'll notice that some of these areas include land in green or blue. These are areas that kept coming up through your feedback. So we wanted to take the time to look at them further, even though they don't have a lot of that land in white that's shown. So the land in white has the fewest restrictions. So the Planning Board has created documents that analyze each of these areas that are circled. So we have one document that indicates rationale against using about 20 locations. And we have a separate document that indicates the rationale for a proposed location in the East Lower Village. So before we take a look at East Lower Village, I wanted to show another way of looking at our analysis. So here, we're just trying to show what all went into our process to find a location. So we have that state-defined land that cannot be included. We have input from Stowe residents. We're looking at the alignment with other existing plans that also include public feedback. And then also the Planning Board's criteria, which is what Michael mentioned earlier about the Planning Board's approach, meeting the minimum requirements, maximizing economic benefits to Stowe and retaining Stowe's rural landscape. So those are really the goals of the initiative. So the output of this process is the location to the east of Lower Village. So just to provide some orientation here, the areas in red are the parcels that are within the proposed East Lower Village District. So to the left is Lower Village where the Shaw's Plaza is. It's our primary business location in, in Stowe. And then to the right, to the east is Maynard. So you have the Maynard Town Line right there, right next to Erickson's. So to the south of this is Town Forest, the Asbury Rail Trail. And the areas in blue are wetlands. And then the green is the Lower Village Cemetery, considered open space. So the whole area is about 14 acres, though once the wetlands are subtracted out, this is just over 12 acres of compliant land. So this location was rated number one in our community survey, a forum that we held in February and the town board and committee survey. We feel that the proximity to Lower Village encourages economic growth. It provides access via Great Road to minimize traffic concerns. It also encourages smaller incremental growth because it's made up of several smaller parcels that have separate ownership versus if we had zoned over one, one parcel itself with single ownership, which would more likely result in a larger development that would come all at once. This location also offers the proximity to recreation, pedestrian and cyclist facilities nearby. And it avoids parcels with farms, historic and rural views and non-residential districts. So we have confirmed that this location will also meet the state's requirement. So here's another look at the location. This is again, seven residentially zoned parcels. Three of them are only partially within the district. As Michael mentioned, we do have requirements around the size of the district and the fact that the parcels need to be touching, they need to be contiguous. So a few of those parcels, we, we looked to act as connector parcels. And then we're also looking to, to provide a minimum response to the state's law. So this includes the Apple Country Animal Hospital, which is residentially zoned. It also includes the former Marble Hill Farm Stand, again, residentially zoned. And all of these parcels are within a half mile of Lower Village, which is generally considered to be a walkable distance. So looking back at Stowe's goals, we are looking to maximize benefits to Stowe. So by supporting our local businesses, giving the potential for more patrons to live within walking distance of our primary business district, giving folks who work locally the potential to live closer to the jobs, knowing that this type of housing can be more affordable than a single-family home. And this is a companion to the town's vision of Lower Village. It's a long-range plan toward a village center that we're continually building toward. So providing diverse housing types to meet the needs of our residents. We know that Stowe residents have stated this as a goal for decades in planning documents. And we want to allow the housing types that residents have asked for. So to allow seniors to downsize and remain in their community or allow young adults to rent in Stowe, for example. Also ensuring that open space is preserved. So by not placing this district over open land, we're allowing more people to live where there already is housing. So rather than creating a new pocket of population. And I want to make clear another point that Michael made earlier. So we understand that this housing initiative is just one piece of the housing puzzle. It'll get us toward our goals, but we will need to keep working. So the Planning Board is open to exploring multifamily housing in the future, though it likely wouldn't meet the requirements of this specific law. So in the future, we'd like to explore this more, but with greater flexibility. And also, the number of units that may be built through this bylaw will depend on many factors, including water and septic requirements, which do limit development. Okay, so follow the zoning article, shape future development. So what can be controlled are a few different elements that are within our zoning bylaw. So housing types, we're only allowing duplexes, triplexes and townhomes. So we're not including large apartment complexes. The building height is the same as it is for any other residential building, so 35 feet. The setbacks, the, the distance between, from the, the property line to your home is the same as it is in the residential zoning. We also include an open space component, so that 20% of the land has to remain open or green. And then we're still allowing, still requiring all other permitting to remain in place. So as Michael said, Wetlands Protection Act, well-inseptic regs, fire building codes are still, still required. So what we cannot control is whether or not multifamily housing is built, the size of the district, we do have a minimum size requirement, and also the density. So allowing up to 15 housing units per acre. And again, any housing developed is subject to restrictions, such as the private well and septic, which will limit the amount of housing developed. And so we, we know that we likely will not see housing developed at that density. We'll likely see something lower. I also just want to clarify, the town will not be selecting developers or having any hand in constructing homes. So the town is not taking property. We're just adding flexibility through zoning. So what does it mean for property owners within the proposed district? So to be clear, there are no requirements of property owners. So nothing has to change. The state mandate does not require any additional building. It's only having zoning in place. So it's just defining what can, it cannot happen, and just providing additional options if the property owner desires. So any future development again, would not need to be constructed at that maximum density. Properties could remain single-family homes or they could include a duplex or other multifamily housing. It's all a choice. So after tonight, the Planning Board will hold its required public hearing on September 9th. And residents will have the opportunity to vote on multifamily zoning at the special town meeting on October 27th. And then the state has set that deadline for us to comply. So we have until the end of December of this year. So we just threw a lot of information at you. So we're going to allow you to So we're going to allow you to type in questions into the Q and A feature on Zoom at the bottom of your screen. We've opted to make this an info session rather than a forum. So we're looking to answer any lingering questions, understanding that the public hearing, again, is scheduled for September 9th. And that will be an opportunity for residents to really provide a lot more commenting on the zoning. But if you do provide us with comments now, we'll make sure to share those with the planning board. And we do want to divide this into three different sections. So first off, we'll start with questions, or if there's any clarification that we can offer about the state's law, and then we'll move on to questions about Stowe's requirements. And then we'll end with questions about our specific proposal. So we'll start off with the state's MBTA Communities Act. So if you want to go ahead and type in any questions that you have, feel free to do so in the Q and A feature. It looks like a question mark symbol at the bottom of your screen. So once those start popping up, we can start answering whatever is coming up for you. And I'll give it a moment, because there may not be too many about the state's law. Let you unmute, Laurie, hold on.
I just wanted to say that it took me a minute to find the question mark, and you may have to click on the three dots to find it.
Thank you, Laurie. Okay, so one question is if we could say a little bit more about how the state determines compliance. Thank you. So the state has a compliance model that they take a look at. So the state is doing very specific calculations about what our specific district looks like. So they'll look at all the parcel sizes. They'll take a look at the setbacks that we put into the zoning bylaw, the height restrictions, what wetlands are in the area, the right-of-ways. And through this complicated spreadsheet, they'll find out whether or not our district complies with our minimum requirements. So the state has gone through that process for us, and we have been working with consultants to show us that the location works. At the same time, we've also provided them with a copy of our bylaw. And so they need to make sure that our language in the zoning also complies with the law's requirements as well, and that it doesn't impact the location and how the location may be developable. So they go through this review process to determine compliance with the MBTA Communities Law. At the same time, the law is also reviewed by the Attorney General's Office, just as any other zoning is. So for this, it's a special two-step process. So there's a question of if the proposal is defeated at town meeting, will the state offer a reasonable time to try again with another site? So we have until December 31st of this year to comply. So if we do not have a compliant zoning bylaw and zoning district at that time, they are not offering another extension. So they have offered some towns' extensions in the past. That was based on the results of a court case. They have made it clear that they are not offering any future extensions. So our deadline for compliance truly is December 31st. So there's also the question about the density that the state included. So at 15 units an acre, can one think that the state was considering public sewers and water and didn't give a lot of consideration to towns that mostly have septics and wells? That's a good question. What we've seen from the state in the law is that they are understanding that some of the towns, including Stowe, that are adjacent small towns, don't have public water, public sewer. So the state's made it clear that they also understand that we likely will not be seeing the development at 15 units an acre. So for them, they wanted to set a clear density across the board, understanding that towns like Stowe simply will not see it. And that's one of the requirements that's coming from the state and is not something that we're able to change at this time. All right, I'm not seeing any more questions about the state's law. So I'm going to move forward to any clarifications that we could make about the Stowe's specific requirements. And if you're just joining us, we're using the Q and A feature. So at the bottom of your screen, you'll either see a little question mark logo, and you'll click that and type in your question, or you'll see the three dots indicating there are more options, and you'll have to navigate to it there. Right, so we've got one question asking if we could say more about how this opportunity can be used to shape how small adjacent towns can increase housing access while preserving the historic character of the municipality. And alternatively, what do we see as the biggest challenges between now and town meeting or beyond? So I think that one of the great parts about this legislation is that we are able to choose the location of this. With other housing developments, we have less control over the location. But also, we're able to allow property owners to have their single-family home remain while adding more opportunities onto their land. And so in that way, we're preserving existing homes and preserving the historic landscape of the town. So really looking at what areas of town residents view as part of that rural landscape or rural heritage of Stowe to make sure that we're not using open space for housing and that we're increasing density in areas that already have housing located in them. And that kind of gets to that classic New England village center feel. So it also aligns well with our vision of our primary business district and having more homes closer together and closer to the business district. I'll have planning board members chime in if you have any ideas about the biggest challenges between now and town meeting. But I'll say for one, I think it's really just getting the word out, you know, wanting to make sure that residents are very aware of how important this bylaw is and how it shapes our community. So wanting to make sure that people know about town meeting is a big one for me. But if any planning board members want to just raise their hand or wave if they have any other thoughts on that question. I'm not seeing anyone. Right. So the question is, why do the planning board not prioritize the preservation of existing single-family neighborhoods in the selection criteria? So I can offer one answer, and certainly others can chime in here. But the planning board opted to look at the residential district, thinking that that is where we allow housing. So again, thinking about adding on to options where we already have neighborhoods. So adding more options in areas that are already disturbed in order to preserve open space. We know that it is such a large part of why Stowe residents moved to Stowe, or why people moved to Stowe, why residents stay in Stowe. Yeah, and I'll also just mention that the planning board really has heard that feedback from the neighborhood and has opted to look closer at the bylaw and the location. So the location of East Lower Village has actually shrunk, given feedback from the neighborhood. We've also added a few provisions in the bylaw to make sure that we are trying to minimize the impact on the existing neighborhood. So allowing single-family homes to remain on the same parcel as multifamily housing, to make sure that we're giving people more opportunity, taking more look at setbacks, open space. If other members have additional comments on that question.
I mean, one thing that you had mentioned, and I'll just highlight it here because it is one of the reasons, is that we've opted to encourage incremental infill and growth, infill growth with this zoning district and bylaw that the state is maintaining us versus putting the district on a large residential undeveloped piece of land that may invite a very large, all-at-once development having more impact on the town. So that was one of the major reasons as well.
All right, so another question is, the area of Stowe that is within the East Lower Village District is the only area on 117 that doesn't have a sidewalk on that side of the street. How do you think people will be able to walk to Lower Village businesses in such a dangerous area? I think that's a great question, thank you. We do understand there is not a sidewalk in this location. The bylaw offers some incentive for developers to assist with that, to install sidewalks. And then also, this stretch of sidewalk has long been a priority for the town. So it's within another plan that we have called the Complete Streets Prioritization Plan. So it's already an area of town that we know that residents have been asking for a sidewalk for a long time. And that is going to help us with future grant requests through the state in order to design and construct that sidewalk. So the state has opened up a capital grant for communities that are compliant with MBTA community zoning to allow improvements to the multifamily district. So this is one of those types of improvements that would be considered under that grant. So it is our hope to get that constructed as we can. All right, so I'll move on to the next. So are there any clarifications that we can make about the planning board's proposal? So any questions on the location, the bylaw, or the approach? There is a question about the timing of when the planning board notified the residents and abutters of the East Lower Village area. So I should just mention that we notified the abutters of this area in the spring prior to the planning board moving forward with this location. There's a question about discussing a little bit more about the other sites that were identified. So the planning board had originally, I'm actually forgetting the numbers here, but we identified several sites around town based on the mapping analyses, the other plans, resident input. And these were areas all around Lower Village, so along Red Acre Road, around the Lanes End area, looking a little bit more around there. I'm actually going to move to that slide to show, might help me discuss this a little better. So we're really looking all over Lower Village, again, knowing that for Stowe, it would be important to maximize the economic development benefit. But through the other plans, feedback, we also were getting asked questions about, you know, thinking about other village centers. So we have Town Center here. So thinking about adding more density to our existing villages. So we have Lower Village, Town Center, and then the Gleeson Dale area as well. We also looked at other areas that included business-zoned properties. So looking at the Hudson Road-Great Road intersection, thinking about whether or not we could do a mixed-use district to allow both residential multifamily and businesses in that area. And a lot of these were taken out of consideration in part because of, what you'll see here in blue is this water resource protection overlay. So the purpose of this district that's in this light blue is to protect groundwater. And through the state's MBTA Act, we are not allowed to require special permits. So we felt very uncomfortable needing to waive the special permits, the review requirement for a groundwater protection for multifamily homes, so for dense housing. Also knowing that all the abutters are on private wells, so really not wanting to impact existing residents or future residents. There are a number of other areas that came from residents who specifically asked us to look at other locations. So areas along Bruin Road, the southeast of Stowe, the ETNL sites on the west of Stowe. These sites, neither of them had enough land to comply with the law. So we need to have at least five acres minimum. Neither of them would do that. We took a look at the Minuteman Airfield, other sites along Taylor Road and Harvard. And again, really thinking about traffic impacts on these local roads, creating, again, creating new pockets of population where there may not be. where there may not be, such as if we zoned over some parcels off of Asa Whitcomb. And so really thinking about, for Stowe, what is the best response to 3A? And so we really felt like it was, again, looking at residentially-zoned properties that are near our economic center. There's also a question about the need to relocate wildlife that would be impacted by building in this area. You know, I understand that there is wildlife in the area, as there is, you know, all within Stowe. So of course, no, we do not have a plan. But again, this is a zoning district only, we are not requiring building. So any building that happens would be a product of the desire of the neighborhood itself. All right, well, I'll just give it another few seconds here, if there are any last questions. Otherwise, you know, please know that if you have any questions in the coming few months, please feel free to reach out to the Planning Department to get any more information. Got one more question coming in. So the question is, since the zoning will allow building by right, what limitations are in the bylaw to direct what will be built? I'm going to find that slide that shows a little bit more about it. So while we don't have a special permit process, we will have site plan approval. So there will be a public hearing for any development that would come through this. So the Planning Board would have the opportunity to alert neighbors and take a look through the zoning bylaw to ensure that it meets all of our requirements. So the limitations are around the housing types, the density, the building height, making sure there's specific setbacks from property lines, the amount of open space that's allowed within the site. The zoning bylaw goes into other details about other site features that we're looking for. So allowing connectivity between the building and the roadway, or one building to another, looking at just other site characteristics and site planning. So knowing that we're not able to dictate much of the use, really looking at how the site is laid out. So it's unfortunate, there aren't many ways that we can regulate or limit what the development looks like, though we can say what specific housing types are allowed, and some other typical zoning requirements. All right, well, our next event with MBTA Communities, again, will be our public hearing. That's on Tuesday, September 9th at 7:00 PM via Zoom. So be on the lookout for that agenda from the Planning Board. Thank you all so much for coming.